For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. And we'll move on to item number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we will close public comment. We'll move on to item number four. Approved minutes from the June 20th, 2016 ordinance committee meeting to have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes 3-0-1, and please note Anne Marie's abstention. Item number five, approved minutes from the June 21st, 2016 regular meeting to have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion?
No, I wasn't, sorry.
You weren't there.
Yeah, I just realized.
She can still.
I can still second, though, right?
Yeah, well, we'll give the second to Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes aye, motion passes 3-0-1, and please note Nicole's abstention. Item number six is the first selectman's report, and it's just a quick report tonight. I met a few times with Brian Asteriak to finish the road program book and presentation. Brian will present his findings and recommendations to this board on July 19th. We'd hoped to have it for today, but Brian needed an extra two weeks, so we'll have that on our agenda for the 19th. Year-end budget work continues. We're still in the process of finalizing the numbers, but are estimating that the town will finish the year with a surplus again. We don't expect to have solid numbers for several weeks, but I will provide updates as they come into me. Met with a representative from Trinity Church about the potential of a shared parking lot on church land for use by the town and the church. We are in the preliminary phase at this point, but hope to have something for this board to review by August. And then we plan to begin the work on Gary Park Parking Lot by the end of the month, and we're going to find out who Gary is later on, so that's exciting. Our hope is to repave the entire lot, as well as expand it in certain spots to accommodate more parking. I'll be meeting with Brian Asteriak tomorrow morning to review the plan and to set the timeline, so I'll have more updates for you guys on the 19th. So that closes the first selectman's report. Item number seven is discussion, take possible action regarding potential endorsement of a draft of the Plan of Conservation and Development. At this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to table, as representatives from the Nogent Valley Council of Governments, we're supposed to be here to make a presentation, they were unable to make it tonight, so can I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Nicole, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes 4-0. Next item is item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding license agreement with CARES. You should all have a draft, which was handed out to you tonight, of the license agreement that Rich and I are working on with CARES, which is short for COCO's Animal Rescue Efforts of Seymour Incorporated. This is the volunteer group that's been working on the animal shelter for quite some time. If you recall at our last meeting, you folks empowered Rich and myself to enter into some discussions and negotiations with them. I met with the group, and we had some initial conversations. We're on the same page with just about everything, there's no real issues or sticking points. So what you see in front of you is the license agreement that Rich has put together. I'll ask him to comment on that and then make a few other comments. If you are comfortable with this, then we will reach out to those folks, and we'll get this signed off and set and get them up and running once they have met all of the criteria that we put in place for them. So Rich, you want to jump in?
Yes, thank you. We believe that the license agreement best serves the town in terms of this particular arrangement. It allows the animal rescue group to take possession of the property for the purpose of serving as an animal rescue, and it also provides for a short termination if, for any reason, the town of Seymour needs to take back the animal shelter for the purpose of utilizing it for, of course, a shelter. So although that is, that's not what's contemplated at present, but it is one of those things that should be done in order to protect the town. All of the other provisions are in order, and really, we seem to be, we seem to be in agreement on all of them. With, we do have one issue, however. COCO's Animal Rescue Efforts of Seymour, Inc., we can find no evidence of the existence of that, of an entity by that name filed with the Secretary of State's office in Connecticut. So through Kurt, we're going to reach back out to them and try to confirm their legal existence. That is an impediment, I might add. We do need to have an entity that we can contract with. So that's the, although it's a big one, if they haven't filed with the Secretary of State, they sure need to do that. But it appears from documents that they provided to Kurt that they're a 501(c)(3), so I'm sure there's just something wrong with the name they gave us. So let's hope we can, we can confirm that, and then we'll be ready to move forward with this.
All right, so just under, again, are the things that we had talked about on page two. Talks, item three, talks about the licensing fee. It'll be $10 a year for use of the facility. The town, as it stands now, will pay the utilities for the building, but that can change over time, and that depends on the financial stability of the rescue. They, we will be responsible for general maintenance, general wear and tear type things. But if the rescue adds anything additional, I know they're talking about potentially putting a generator up there, they would be responsible for any new, new equipment, any add-ons that they put up there, and all add-ons need to be approved by the town, anything in excess of, I believe it's $1,000. We are also going to limit when the public can actually be in the building, not counting volunteers. So they can be open essentially for business from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week, and then all cars have to be out of the lot by 9:00 PM. Now, that gives them the opportunity to take care of the animals as much as they need to. So, but again, everything's here for everyone to review. If you have any questions, concerns, issues with anything that you see, please reach out to myself, words from Rich, and let us know. But I think once we clear up this issue with the entity and that is taken care of, I think we're just about there. We'll meet with them and hopefully get this all signed and squared away by next week at the latest, I would expect. So, okay. I don't need any action from the board, because they've already given that.
My recollection is, not at the last meeting, which my colleague Brian Leclerc covered, but at the prior one, I think the board authorized you to do this.
All right, any questions from anybody?
We're going to have to go to a public meeting for this, correct?
No, not for a license.
Not for a license, no.
And again, just to point out to Rich's statement earlier, if Seymour were to decide that they were going to leave the regional animal shelter that we're a member of, we can very quickly convert back into our own animal shelter up there, and the rescue is aware of that, and they will graciously move out of the way at that point to allow us to come back. So shouldn't be any issues with that. Okay. There's no other questions or comments. Item number nine, discussion, take possible action regarding awarding of the downtown streetlight bid. You should all have a letter in your packets, which I will read. Dear Mr. Meller, Napis &amp; Young Engineers Incorporated, open bids for the above referenced project, which is the Main Street Investment Fund project, on June 21st, 2016. This project included construction of 12 new handicap ramps and construction of several sidewalks on Main Street to Forest Street, Wakely Street, and First Street. The original low bid by G. Pick &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated, which included Wakely Street, was above the project grant amount of $375,000. We have deleted the work on Wakely Street and adjusted the total price to $325,915. Therefore, Napis &amp; Young Engineers Incorporated recommends that the Seymour Board of Selectmen approve the award of the Main Street Investment Fund Project Sidewalk Improvements to G. Pick &amp; Sons Construction Company Incorporated in an amount of $325,915. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. James Galligan, Napis &amp; Young Town Engineers of Seymour. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour award the Main Street Investment Fund Project Sidewalk Improvement Bid to G. Pick &amp; Sons Construction Company in an amount not to exceed $325,915. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion?
What was the work to be done on Wakely?
Same thing.
Same thing?
Yep.
So why did, what made us take out Wakely?
We didn't have enough money.
Right, but why that street versus any other street?
Wakely, they're looking at paving, so they will include that in the paving project if we do that.
Thank you.
Questions, thoughts, comments, concerns? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes 4-0. Next item, item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding proposed ordinance changes. Okay, since we're essentially the ordinance committee tonight with the Anne Marie. Ordinance Committee met back at the end of June, and will be meeting again later this month, and we reviewed four ordinances, so I'll give, Anne Marie, I'll give you an update as to where we stand.
Okay.
And then into the record. The first one, we'll start with the easiest one first, the Strategic Planning Ordinance, which Rory sent to you. The Strategic Planning Commission is asking that we change the reporting requirements from quarterly to semi-annual, and from the requirements of those who are going to report, it says the first selectman, finance director, and the director of operations. Now they want to change it to meet with the first selectman and the staff that he or she deems necessary. So the ordinance committee is very comfortable with that. So we'll have this on for the 19th for discussion and to move, to move that along. The Justice of the Peace Ordinance was put on there. This was put forward by our town clerks, represented nicely by Mrs. McMurray over there. I just like saying that, huh? One of the issues we have is we are, our ordinance only allows for 20 justices of the peace, and it's supposed to be evenly distributed between Republicans, Democrats, and unaffiliated voters. 20, obviously, we can't do that, so if nothing else, they're asking for a number divisible by 3, which the three of us all agreed with. Brian Leclerc, who sat with us during the meeting, is doing some research to see what the actual number we can have.
I actually have that.
Here we go.
Tonight. This is rather extraordinary. I don't know if you recall this, I think I might have said it at the first meeting. The state statute dealing with JPs is somewhat unusual. It's 9-183A, and because it's such an unusual, almost archaic statute in some ways, the Secretary of State's office has actually put out a paper on this, because the numbers are somewhat just not what you're used to contemplating. Let's say that. The number of justices of the peace for each town shall be equal to one-third the number of jurors, jurors, to which such town is by law entitled, provided any town, and it goes on from there to say that you can vary it, however, in no event shall there be less than 15. And then you, you heard the first selectman say one-third, one-third, one-third. Well, according to a document recently prepared by the Secretary of State, Seymour has 4,107 jurors. Therefore, the maximum number of justices of the peace is 1,369. I kid you not. So the town can amend the ordinance to increase or decrease the number of justices to one equally divisible by 3, but not less than 15, nor more than 1,369. So that's your report on the research based upon the Secretary of State's paper related to 9-183A of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Okay. Well, the three of us had discussed, 30 is a number we had kicked around, but again, we weren't sure if that was too many, but come to find out.
It just had a zero to it.
Yeah, we can make it, we can make it 300.
Go figure, right?
If we'd like, so. So again, the ordinance committee will meet, we'll set on a number, and we'll bring that back to, to this board for discussion and everything. So Rory, just as a note, if you can set a date for next week with, for the ordinance committee, we'll get that taken care of before the 19th. And then two others which, excuse me, we're still working on. I don't have a lot of details yet, but just wanted to give you an update. The Historic Landmark Preservation Ordinance, this was brought to us by our town historian, Marion O'Keefe, to allow the town the ability to slow potentially a demolition of what would be considered an historic building or an historic house. I think the only time in recent history that we've seen this in Seymour was where 1757 currently stands. I guess that house was considered historic. I don't know why I'm talking to you, too, because we've already had this conversation. And they took the building down quickly. What she's asking for is a moratorium to allow the building to be, whether it be catalogued or pictures taken or what have you before it's taken down. So we're in the very early stages of that. I know Milford has some experience with that, so, you know, Rich will be able to guide us as they know firsthand what's going on in Milford, so. And then the other one is the Street Excavation Ordinance. This was put forward by Don Smith. One of the biggest issues we have in town is utilities, what have you, need to cut into the street, whether it be water lines, power lines, what have you. This will allow us better control over how those patches are done. Essentially, the town will charge, just to keep it simple, a flat amount for the amount of street that's open, and the town contractor will do the work. So it'll no longer be, the Water Authority will no longer be the utility company. It'll be the town doing the work themselves. That way, we know the quality is there. If there's any issues, we can go right back to the vendor that we use. You know, we have sinkholes or dips in the roads all over the street. A lot of times, that's caused by that work not being done properly. Those are the four ordinances. Like I said, I expect that on the 19th, the Strategic Planning and the Justice of the Peace Ordinance will be ready for action by the board, at least to start the process. We sent the Street Excavation Ordinance to Brian Asteriak as well to put a second pair of eyes on it after Don Smith's review. We expect to have that back at our next meeting, so we'll have more updates there. So Karen, Nicole, any comments, anything you want to add, anything I missed?
No.
Karen, any?
I don't think so.
No, okay. And Anne Marie, any questions? No, okay, perfect. And Rory, you'll set that date for next week. Okay. All right, item number 11, appointments. We have two appointments this evening. We have Alex Dankin, Memorial Day Committee. It's an appointment, a two-year term, it expires 7/5/2018. Motion by Nicole, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes 4-0. Eric Amlar, Public Works Board. It's a new appointment, it's a two-year term, it expires 7/5/2018. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Item number 12, tax refunds and abatements. We have a couple things to do here, but Nicole, if you can do the letter first.
The following overpayment of tax payment in total of $4,546.67 needs to be approved for refund in accordance with provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated at Seymour the 30th day of June 2016. Susan Bolan, Tax Office.
Thank you very much. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the tax collector's report as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer votes aye, motion passes 5-0. And just note for the record, Stefan's arrival at 7:21, so that way people don't wonder. Okay, also, you have in your packets, you should have two abatement requests from our tax collector. And these are on two pieces of property that the town has assumed control over. One is at 100 Prospect Street, the other is at 139 Maple Street. So we need to, I guess, waive the payment of taxes on these two pieces of property. All right, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour waive the taxes that are due on 139 Maple Street, the July 1st, 2016 payment of $636.30, and the January 1st, 2017 payment of $636.30 for a total amount of $1,272.60. Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the cheer votes aye, motion passes 5-0. And then the next one, I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour waive the taxes due for 100 Prospect Street for July 1st, 2016 in the amount of $331.38, and January 1st, 2017 in the amount of $331.38 for a total amount of $662.76. Motion by Nicole, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the cheer votes aye, motion passes 5-0. Okay, transfers, we have no transfers before us this evening. Item number 14, correspondence. We have a couple pieces of correspondence. We have the check registers, as always, excuse me. We have a letter from the first selectwoman of Woodbridge to Secretary Barnes of OPM, just letting him know about the regional animal shelter and Seymour's working together. And then we have two correspondents. One, let's start with the June 19th, 2016. This is public comment from Joseph Luciano, who was a resident. It didn't make it in time for the last meeting for public comment, so, or for correspondence, I should say. And again, he has a voice in concern about the need for additional handicap accessible ramps on Wakely and DeForest Street, but again, our Main Street Investment Grant will be addressing that, but he wanted to voice his concern about that. And then he also sent a follow-up on July 1st, one, to reiterate what he had written on the 19th, because it was not noted in the record. And then, secondly, he wanted to find out the town's policy on public comment provided by citizens with disabilities. And then he's also asking for identity function and activities of Seymour's ADA coordinator. So we just wanted that read into the record, so that way that is there. Closes correspondence, public comments. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Asking one last time, is there any public comment? Hearing no public comment. We'll go to item number 16, selectmen's public comments. Stefan?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Karen Stanek for a discussion on Gary.
I have, I have two documents.
Is there anything you'd like to add before we do this? Because this will be fun, I think. Is there anything serious you want to talk about? Not that this isn't serious, but is there any other issues you want to address?
This is what I've got.
Okay, fire away.
Okay. And maybe Rich can help me here. I've got a warranty deed. I have no idea what that means.
It's a deed with something called warranty covenants. If you're buying a house, for example, your lawyer's going to make sure you get a warranty deed from the person selling you the property. That is the type of deed most people get. Another type of deed is a quitclaim deed that doesn't contain the warranty covenants. That's a warranty deed, that's a better type of deed, if you will.
So it's almost like insurance on the property?
Not insurance, but it's, you're effectively warranting certain things.
Okay. I don't know which one to start with. The first document I have talks about the gentleman who bought the property up on what's known as Gary Park Drive. His name is Clarence, last name is O-P-P-E-L. Opel? Okay, and he bought it, well, there are several references to how much money was paid for it, but the first payment was $5,700 per acre, per acre. And then it goes on to talk about the fact that he ended up buying a total of 31.32 acres. And it says, more or less, and the surveyor's name was Joseph Alberdi. And it says, together with a ride away from this property to Davis Road for the purpose of entrance to and exit from said property, as shown on the map. And then it goes on in some other detail, and there are maps recorded. I don't have either map, but they are recorded. And this happened on the 23rd day of August, 1974. The warranty deed talks about the fact that Clarence Opel of the city of Shelton, for consideration of $113,375, which in my opinion was a fortune back in 1974, received, to my full satisfaction, of the town of Seymour, a municipal corporation located in the county of New Haven in the state of Connecticut. And then it goes on, and it says, "The town of Seymour grants, bargains, sells, and confirms its successors and assigns this land being shown and designated as Lot Number 2, containing 19.8 acres, more or less on a map entitled Gary Park, prepared for this Mr. Clarence Opel." And it goes on, and it gives all kinds of geographic directions. And this was recorded the 10th day of January in the year of our Lord, 1975. Now, I talked to a lawyer who handled this, who's Ben Winnick, and he said Gary is Mr. Opel's son.
Oh.
Yeah.
Here is the accountant in Chell. Oh, no, that's Ray.
Opel?
Yeah.
The name is familiar.
Yeah.
And Ben is an old friend, so.
Yeah, there's an Opel, and there's an accounting firm, Chell.
Right, right, right. He's an accountant, yes.
If anybody wants to see these documents.
So the mystery of Gary has been solved. So he bought the property and named it, put a son, wrote it, named it after his son.
That's exactly right.
Thanks, Karen.
There we go. Nice work, Karen.
That's pretty cool. Now we don't have shirts made up, who's Gary?
Yep. Now, Leclerc already had those shirts made.
Now, the question is.
Stay calm and.
What do you want to do with that?
Well, in preparation of that, Section 14-10, street names. Board of Selectmen shall have the exclusive right to name and rename streets in the town after review of the proposed street name by the Emergency Services Committee. And just speaking with some of those folks, you're going to be very hard-pressed to get them to change a street name unless you're naming it after.
Well, I did a little bit more research. You can rename the park without renaming the street.
Oh, yeah, of course. So you want to rename the park? So I'll make a motion to name it after me.
It's his park, is it not?
It's whose park?
Oh, it's his.
He sold it to us.
Absolutely, Coach, jump right in. This is, this is, this went off the track a long time ago.
Yes. 19.89. Oh, I don't know about that. Yes. Yeah, I know Mr. Brandon was involved. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you, Coach.
But like I said, if anybody wants copies of these documents, I've got them.
Well, it must have been fun to look for. Anything else you want to add? Any additional comments, thoughts?
You know, it occurred to me that when they named, oh, God, I'm trying to think of the name of the school in Oxford. They had a contest. They let the kids pick the name of the school.
Mm-hmm. They did that for Silver Mine Road, too, the old industrial park.
Okay. So...
Pete Torini came up with the name Cogwheel.
So maybe if we don't want to take on the fire department or whatever department, we let the kids do it.
Kids do what?
Name the park.
Park has nothing to do with that. It's only a road. It's only a road. This board decides parks and schools, or not schools, buildings and things like that. Again, we're setting a, it's a slippery slope when we just start just deciding to start naming things for, for no good reason. I mean, we named the Fish Bypass. That was brand new after Paul Pollock. That made sense, I thought. But just to arbitrarily change the name of a park, I don't necessarily agree with, unless there's a good reason. If you want to name it after someone who just recently passed away that did a lot for the community or something like that, that's one thing. But just to change the name of a park to change the name of a park, I don't know if I support. That's just me. I mean, everybody else can weigh in if we want to, but that's just kind of where I am on it.
Okay.
Plus, then we have to change all the signs.
Speaking of that, months and months and months ago, somebody stole the sign in front of Pauline Lowesberry's house for Canfield.
The street sign?
It's been months.
I'm saying the street sign?
Yes.
Oh, the street sign.
Oh, I didn't know that. You can do it. Rory, can you make a note to call? Have Don order it? No, it's not a problem. Just get it ordered. Hold on. We can get that taken out. I'll take it fixed in a couple of days. They'll order the sign, put anyone up.
Just mentioning.
Yeah, no, not a problem. All right. Nicole?
I have nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Anne Marie?
I have nothing for tonight.
All right. And just as a note for myself, I will be in, I'll leave him for Washington, D.C. tomorrow morning. I'll be back late Friday night or Saturday morning. I'm going to try to have meetings with our federal delegation with regards to the Tiger Grant. So while they are back in session and they're down there, and assuming they're all sitting in one place at this point, I'm going to try to have some conversation with them just to lobby the importance of that $10 million grant for the town of Seymour and the value, well, not only for Seymour, but the Beacon Falls. You know, I spoke with First Selectman Bealik as well, so he gave me some, some of his thoughts and comments. He's spoken to them as well. But I'm going to try to lobby them because that's obviously very important. So I'll be gone for those three days, just in case anybody was wondering. So, all right. Rich, anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing.
All right. With that, then, I will entertain a motion...
I'll make a motion, I'll move.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Mark the meeting closed at 7:36 p.m.